Good evening. It's Tuesday, January 7th. Happy New Year to everyone and welcome to the council chambers for our committee of the whole meeting. I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And I'd like to start with a moment of silent reflection. But before we get there, I just want to share a few words with you. Regardless of what side of the political aisle you are on, or how you might feel about the resignation of Prime Minister yesterday, or the timing of this decision indeed, I'm going to follow in the steps of Mayor Patrick Brown of Brampton, a former leader of the Conservative Party of Ontario and saying this. Public service is a significant commitment and it undoubtedly takes a toll on oneself, one's family and personal life for all those who serve in political office. So on behalf of the municipality of Port Hope, I want to thank Mr Trudeau for his years of service to Canada as the Prime Minister and Member of Parliament. As you join me in a moment of silent reflection today, let us reflect on how we can treat people with dignity, kindness, even in the face of significant and passionate disagreement. So please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Moving on to our land acknowledgement, the municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Michisagik Anishnabik Traditional Territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work and play, including the Ganaraska Forest and River. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nation, Métis and Inuit Peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from Indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I note that none were received in advance of today's meeting, seeing none. Moving on to item number three, correspondence 3.1, Chief of Police, Tim Farkason, Port Hope Police Services regarding George Hamilton School Property, 3200 County Road. I'm just introducing this matter very, very briefly. I think the letter is quite self-explanatory and I look forward to having the chief address council on January 21st. But I do think it's a good reminder in terms of reflecting on the meeting that we had at the end of the year and receiving this correspondence that if council members have any questions, concerns, or need any more information about any staff report, to reach out to staff prior to coming to council, especially in the instances where staff reports are so diligently scribed in response to council direction and available weeks before any decision needs to be made. But I think that it's great that we've got the chief coming to address us on the 21st of January. And I am also certain that with the exception of those who are unencumbered by the ravages of fact-based processes, all residents, including surely those who have served on council previously, know that the mayor does not make unilateral decisions about real estate purchases, sales of municipal lands and prices set for transactions. These are council decisions and are informed by the expertise of staff and real estate professionals. So I'm just bringing this letter forward for information and can I get a mover and seconder on that move by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Todd? Any further comments or thoughts on that? All in favour? Thank you, and that is passed. Moving on to items for consideration, item four, 4.1, Report DS0125 Re-site Plan Agreement, SP0406 2024, and Removal of Holding H5 Provision, ZBO7 2024 5666, Ganaraska Road. Does staff have anything further to add before council considers this report? See, I'm seeing heads shaking, no? So can I get a mover and seconder for this item? Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Mink, all in favour? Thank you, and that is passed. Moving on to 4.2, Report ES0125 Re-Ontario Regulation, 45307 Water Financial Plan to Support Municipal Drinking Water License Renewal. Does staff have anything further to add before council considers this report? Seeing none, does council have any questions or comments regarding this report? Okay, seeing none, can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to item 4.3, Report PS0125 Re-Mutual Aid Agreement, agreements between the Corporation of the Municipality of Port Hope, the Municipality of Clarrington and the Township of Cavan-Monahan. Does staff have anything further before council considers this report? Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In 2022, as you know, the municipality of Port Hope completed the Fire Master Plan. And several recommendations that came out of that plan was to solidify basically handshake agreements that we have with neighbouring municipalities and fire services in relation to mutual aid agreements. I've sat down with the fire chief from Cavan-Monahan and also chief speed from Clarrington, and we've come up with these agreements, which will mutually benefit all municipalities when it comes to emergency response, specifically in the Ganaraska Forest, where all three member municipalities border. So now we'll be able to assist each other in the event of emergency to provide a more effective and efficient emergency response to something which may occur in the forest. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. And such an important collaboration on an issue that we don't want to take any risks with. Any further questions or comments for Director Williams? Councillor Mink?
Thank you. And I was going to ask, sorry, through the chair, I was going to ask about the forest. I get a lot of questions about that. And I haven't already talked to you, so I'm putting you on the spot. But in addition to the mutual aid, is there a coming together, if that's the right term, for the forest specifically? We have fires happening throughout the world now, so there is that interest. It's happening here locally.
Through the chair, absolutely. We have a working group that's established with all member municipalities and emergency services, so police, fire and also the Ganaraska Forest members. So we're actually working together. We meet on a quarterly basis throughout the year to discuss issues and we're actually working towards the development of a basically a wildfire plan. Several grants have been applied for and we're hoping to hear back, we'd actually fund the development of a wildfire plan for the forest, which can just build on our response to incident which may occur in that location, so.
Thank you, Director. And I actually just to follow up from councillor Mink's question, does that working group also include a representation from county?
I believe that it does. I don't know the county representative off by hand, but I believe that it does. It's quite a large, comprehensive group.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a mover and seconder to councillor Todd and councillor Les? All in favour? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to what I think is going to be the heart of tonight's meeting, item 4.4, Presentation by Jess McVale, Urban Planner and Land Inventory Project Final Report and Recommendations, Re-Public Urbanism and Parcel Economics and Report, CS0125, Re-Land Inventory, Next Steps. Welcome.
While Jesse comes up, we'll do a bit of a brief introduction for him. Jesse McVale's here tonight. He's an urban planner with Republic Urbanism. He's also representing Parcel Economics, the joint consultants on our land inventory project. We also have Meg Ronson here, our Economic Development Coordinator, who has been instrumental in keeping this project moving along and keeping us on track. Jesse's here tonight, as the mayor mentioned, to present the report, make a presentation to council. I'm confident he'll be able to answer your questions, but we'll also be here to supplement any questions that he can't handle directly. Just given the nature of the report, the size of the report, if you could identify the page or slide or property when you're asking your question, that would be very helpful for us and Jesse as well. Land inventory is a major undertaking and to be clear, there's plenty of work we still have to do here after tonight, but we've had a solid start thanks to Jesse's good work and Republic Urbanism and Partial Economics' good work. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Jesse and ask him to take it away.
Thank you for that introduction, Director Gilmore, and welcome again.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public. So again, my name is Jesse McVale. I'm an urban planner. This is coming through, okay? I'm an urban planner with Republic Urbanism. So I've been a planner with the firm for a number of years now and so we've been working with Meg and Brian and their team and Andrew as well on the land inventory project for the better half of the last year. So our friends at Parcel Economics, they're not here tonight, but they assisted us with some of the market assessments and feasibility exercises that were undertaken as part of the mandate. So tonight, the report, as council knows, it is quite a chunk of a report. So I'm going to try and give kind of a brief summary of sort of the background of the mandate, what we went through, kind of the methodology a little bit, and then I'm going to touch on the end at the findings and kind of what the general takeaways are from this report. I will say just further to what Brian had mentioned, this report largely represents sort of a, you know, we're wrapping up the mandate, but it's sort of a first big step for the municipality in approaching land management from a more strategic perspective. So targeting opportunities for affordable housing, economic development, as well as just generally improving the way lands are managed and approached in the municipality. So a brief agenda here, so I'll just give a brief introduction, a little bit of a project overview, a little bit of background on the project itself, and then we're just going to jump right into the recommendations and then I'll wrap up with a little bit of Q&amp;A. So if there's any questions, I'm sure there'll be questions, happy to answer them if I can. If I can't, happy to follow up with anybody tonight on any information that's desired. So Republic, just a little bit about us, we're a planning and design firm based out of Montreal. So for this project itself, we largely manage the project management, policy review and inventory assessment side of things, so the GIS analysis and work. Parcel Economics is a land economist firm that's based out of the Toronto area. So they helped us again with the market review and the feasibility assessments that were prepared with some of, to complement some of our recommendations that came out of our work. So the projects itself, so this mandate was initiated to help provide better strategic direction to council and the municipality in the way that lands are managed, you know, how lands are sold, disposed of, developed, and particularly public lands. So this isn't just generally every land in the municipality, these are publicly owned lands. So there were two kind of main focuses for this project. The primary focus was creating a digital inventory and organising that inventory of the municipality's lands as they stand today. And then the secondary focus was reviewing existing policies and bylaws that have to do with surplusing and disposing of lands and providing recommendations for updating and modernising those bylaws. So the current bylaws that are in place today, they're getting a little up there in age, they're about 15 to 20 years old if I'm not mistaken. So they'll definitely benefit from a modernisation, injecting a little more strategic approach to the way that's handled. The outcomes for this project were obviously a more organised and digitised version of the municipality's land inventory, making it a little easier to review parcels, evaluate parcels and sort of just manage them in general. Modernising the way that land management is tackled at the administration level. So your bylaws particularly, we have a draft recommendation for updates to your bylaw, for your surplus bylaw. And the third was the identification of strategic development opportunities. So one of the key lenses for this project was focusing on opportunities to create affordable housing and more strategic economic development opportunities with the existing land catalogue. So in short, reviewing the entire catalogue of municipal lands, identifying lands that may be appropriate for disposal or redevelopment for those purposes, and then presenting council with some options to consider here today. So I will reiterate too, we're not presenting anything that's hard and fast today. These will be things that council will likely revisit with staff in the future. Likely more work and investigation will need to be done for any one of these recommendations. So the project timeline, like I said, we've been working on this for the better part of the last year. So this just gives a brief overview, I'm not going to jump too far into it, but it was generally broken into five phases. We largely have been working with staff internally on this project as it is just largely an evaluation exercise. Obviously, public consultation is an important component of land management and anytime council is considering the disposal of lands or redevelopment of public lands, that'll be an important component. So that will come into play as the municipality works to action one or more of the recommendations in here. So in terms of the background, I'm just going to go over a little bit of public land management basics. So this obviously requires a combination of strategic planning, administrative efficiency, the right supporting tools, so using GIS mapping, staff expertise, public consultation, policy to manage your public lands. There are several kind of key documents that dictate how municipalities manage their lands. So this would be the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, to name a few, and then your official plan, economic development strategies, those sorts of things will likely lay out specific directions and policies that dictate how and where you should be managing your public lands. Today, as of today, municipalities do enjoy quite a bit of flexibility with the way that public lands are managed, as opposed to in the past where the province was quite prescriptive in how and when you could use those lands for. But there still are some prescriptive measures that are in place, particularly for road allowances, tax sales, parkland, those sorts of things. So that was all considered as part of the sort of the backgrounding of this project. A common best practice is digitising your land inventory. So municipalities will, you'll already have your GIS system set up, you'll have your parcel fabric set up in your community. The next step is identifying the parcels that are owned by the municipality and maintaining that as sort of a living, breathing layer, if you will. And so this really helps keep all the information that's associated with your land inventory and your parcels in a one-stop-shop place. So you're not having to, you know, go into the vault and look at old files to figure out what was going on with a parcel back in the day. You can tie any number of details to a parcel through this and it just really helps with land evaluation, inquiries, those sorts of things. So just a quick graphic to show kind of some of the inputs that are required to maintain a land inventory in terms of strategic planning, process and policy, stakeholder involvement, it's all connected. And really what a... I'm boring the computer now, I guess. So while we're tackling that, so the land inventory really, what value it offers the municipality in keeping this living, breathing sort of platform together is that it helps the municipality with maintenance and conservation of those lands, it helps with acquisition and disposal, and it also helps with redevelopment. So identifying strategic sites and evaluating and weighting those opportunities, as well as identifying parcels that need to be maintained by the municipality for one reason or another. Example being town hall, likely not going to get rid of it, so mixing that off of the list of properties that are considered. So in terms of the land inventory itself, so the municipality's land inventory is comprised of 338 parcels. And this was at the time of writing this, this may be plus or minus, so just take it with a bit of a grain of salt here. So that amounts to around 216 hectares of land throughout the municipality. Most of the parcels are located either within the urban area or within what we refer to as the Plan 173 lands, which are in the south-west corner of the municipality. So there's about 200 parcels there, so it does kind of skew when you're seeing the non-vacant and vacant parcels. The level of development versus vacant parcels, minus those Plan 173 lands, are about split 50/50. So about 50% of the municipality's lands are currently developed, so either have offices or shops or what have you on them, or parks, or they're vacant. There are a wide variety of land use designations and these range from residential to commercial to open space and the like. So that does not include the road right-of-ways, which were a separate category. So the road right-of-ways inventory, we broke these into for analytical purposes. Typically, a road is not generally seen as its own parcel, but for the purpose of this exercise and giving us that information, we broke them into road segments. So generally speaking, imagine you have a lot in concession, just as an easy example, and you have a surveyed road, we would break that into a segment from north and south and then east and west, those boundaries, and then added those up. So in terms of those road segments, the municipality has 669 of them and those total around just over 1,000 hectares. But really what that translates to is around 400 kilometres of right-of-way. So again, take it with a little bit of a grain of salt because not every technical right-of-way or road allowance is a full-on right-of-way or road allowance. There's trails, there's other easements and things like that, so take from that what you will. Around 75 or 78% of those have some form of improvement on them. So whether they're a full-built-out road or have some level of openness to them that they are publicly travelled. The other 25% are either unimproved, unopened or privately used. The road right-of-ways were not necessarily a primary focus of this mandate, but they were included just as a, as part of the overall scope of the project. In terms of the municipality's bylaws and policies, there is a comprehensive overview of the policy background for land management at municipal level in the report itself. But just to touch on a few of the important ones at the municipality today are the official plan and the economic development strategic plan. These largely are useful for providing more strategic direction for how surplus lands are used, what they should be used for, you know, if there's housing targets or economic development goals, we want to start to look at injecting those into our review of lands. There's the waterfront and riverwalk master plan, which is a relatively recent plan that was developed. So this is also an important one because the municipality does have a few key properties that are in that waterfront area, which are highly, have a lot of great opportunity to them as found in the report. So that's an important one. And the last ones are the, your actual sale of surplus lands bylaw, as well as your road and street and road allowances policies. So again, so 2008, so getting up there about 15 years old. Those do establish good processes, they're still viable today, but those are both obviously in need of modernisation. So just to give a brief touch on the housing and economic conditions in the community, so our friends at Parcel helped do a bit of a market review and assessment of the community to help contextualise our work and to help us shape our lens when we were reviewing the inventory. So to just give a few kind of stats that were pulled from their work, obviously, one of the primary goals from the mandate is the provision of affordable housing, identifying affordable housing opportunities. Port Hope isn't an outlier in terms of the challenges that are experienced across Ontario and in Canada for housing provision. But I just wanted to show some kind of interesting stats that were found. So one of the challenges that Port Hope is dealing with is obviously housing cost. So again, I don't think there's going to be any surprises here, but if we go by the definition of affordable housing in the provincial policy statement, as established by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, we're looking at about $360,000 for an affordable house, which if you kind of look around at the market for a little bit, you'd be hard pressed to probably find a house that's suitable for an household, an average household at that price. On the rental side of things, we're looking at around $1,700 a month for rent as being considered affordable at the higher end of that affordability spectrum. On the right side of the screen, we do have a bit of a breakdown of the typologies of dwellings in Port Hope. So this is a common stat that's shared amongst many communities of this size. So there is quite a domination of single detached homes, unsurprisingly, in a rural-urban mixed community. But it's something to consider when looking at targets for diversifying your housing base and creating more affordable housing in the future. And the last one is household size versus dwelling size. So this is a graphic that looks at the actual number of people in a household versus the number of bedrooms in a household, and this attempts to quantify whether they are living in houses that are beyond their needs. And so this can tie into challenges with supply. So if folks are living in houses that are larger than what they actually need, they may be taking away that house from a household who needs three bedrooms. So obviously, out of context, it is a bit of a snapshot, but within the report, this is further explained. But I just wanted to give a brief kind of touch on that. So through the backgrounding work, a couple of strategic priorities for the land inventory project were identified. I'm not going to read these out, but just as an example for a few, obviously updating and modernising the process and the bylaws that are used to administer this process, you know, looking at identifying economic development opportunities, affordable housing opportunities. And the biggest one would be clarifying, you know, staff roles, council roles in the process. So these priorities were used and established kind of at the outset of the project and injected into the rest of the project and the recommendations. So, which we'll get to right now. So I just wanted to touch briefly, briefly on the approach and methodology used for the evaluation. So a lot of the base data was provided by the municipality of Port Hope. So your land inventory in terms of your GIS data, your parcels themselves, all that information, the zoning, official plan designations, those were all taken by us and put it into our GIS and we used that to assess these parcels. So we used a combination of GIS analysis. There's an assessment tool that's referred to as the HART Assessment Tool, so this is the Housing Assessment Resource Tools. So this is a relatively recent tool that's been developed in collaboration with CMHC and the University of British Columbia. And this tool is used largely to identify suitable sites for affordable housing, particularly out of municipal land inventories. So we used a modified version of this assessment tool and this methodology to score every parcel in your inventory at the outset, based on their proximity to amenities such as schools, grocery stores, parks, those sorts of things. And that really helped us to filter out parcels that may not be appropriate from the get-go. So a combination of that was used to filter down parcels. So this was in addition to looking at parcels that were developed. So my example from earlier, town hall, we did not include that, you know, other things like if there's important parks or trails, things like that, those were eliminated from the get-go. And so we kind of filtered in an iterative process down and down until we were left with a series of parcels that were suitable. So in terms of the findings and recommendations that came out of that exercise, we found that most parcels were not actually viable for surplusing or disposal consideration at this time. It doesn't mean that they're eliminated from the future, but based on our opinion, a total of 19 parcels were identified for further consideration for the municipality. So this was based on their, either their potential to accommodate affordable housing, their ability to accommodate general economic development, or on the other end of the spectrum, if there was a perceived complete lack of strategic value to the municipality. For example, if there's a, you know, a parcel that kind of just came into ownership of Port Hope one year and nobody really remembers why or how or what it's being used for, but it's just there, those were also flagged as well as potential for disposal or redevelopment. So there was a total of 19, and so those are detailed in the report a little further. This is the battery that's low, I think. Okay, so I'll just say next slide. So in addition to the sites that were identified, so the 19 sites, there were six sites that we had hand-selected to develop demonstration concepts for, to sort of provide a more visual demonstration of what the potential is for each of these sites. So these demonstration concepts look at identifying conceptual future uses, as well as a financial feasibility assessment that was prepared by Parcel. So this includes a pro forma and a couple of different scenarios from if the lands were to be developed from a market perspective, if they were to be developed for affordable housing, and looking at what the return, required return on investment is in terms of feasibility. housing, and looking at what the required return on investment is in terms of feasibility. And then there was a third scenario for each of those that was developed for a situation where the lands would be given away at a nominal fee for development to hopefully balance out some of the more infeasible development proposals. So again, these are just for demonstration purposes. We did not do an in-depth due diligence exercise. We did base these on your official plan and your zoning standards and tried to contextualize them in the local area, but they're by no means shovel-ready. So more work would need to be done before any sort of these concepts move forward if and when. Next slide. So in terms of the right-of-way inventory, we had identified seven right-of-ways for disposal or potential redevelopment consideration. An additional 27 right-of-ways were identified for further investigation, as there was still, we felt that this exercise may benefit in the future from a more in-depth investigation from public works or infrastructure. And so with these ones, though, we would caution council and the municipality from the disposal of any of these right-of-ways until it's kind of determined that 100% they are not needed for the future, because right-of-ways are hard to get back unless you're having a development on the land. So any decisions obviously should involve a deeper review. Excellent, please. And in terms of the land inventory, the last recommendation and kind of main recommendation for the land inventory itself was developing a strategy to address the Plan 173 lands. So these are the lands, again, that are located in the southwest corner of the municipality. So I'm sure council is somewhat familiar with these lands, but this is essentially a legacy subdivision that was registered a number of years ago. The municipality currently owns 201 of the parcels in that subdivision. It is located within a prime agricultural area, kind of goes against what we would call a quote-unquote "good planning principles." And so there's a lot of these examples throughout Ontario, and they're not uncommon. But there are challenges for perceived opportunities on these lands, so a lot of times folks will see these in tax sales or through their real estate agent, "Oh, cheap land." You know, this will be great, especially in today's housing market. We can get land for cheap, we can build. Chances are, they probably can't build because they haven't spoken to the municipality, and then it turns out that they can't. And then it keeps that kind of cycle going, where those lands change hand, they come back and forth. So that creates not only headaches for the public and for the purchasers, but also for the municipality in terms of resources and time spent on managing these lands. So we tried to come up with a few approaches to consider for the future, for how we sort of tackle these lands in this area and for further investigation. Next slide, please. So there are four options. The first option would be sort of general land assembly and consolidation and deeming of the lots, being no longer on a plan of subdivision. So these would be the lands particularly owned by the municipality of Port Hope. So the goal here with this option would involve negotiations with existing private owners to try and buy up or transfer lands around the lands that are owned already by the municipality, and to try and consolidate those with the intent of, in the future, perhaps selling them as one giant piece of land to an adjacent farmer or another rural property owner, that would be more conducive to a rural land use. Option two would be implementing a site-specific zone or holding sort of provision to prohibit development and sort of clarify the constraints that are present. I will note that there are legacy restrictions on these lands that were passed historically that do restrict and preclude any development before certain studies are carried out. But in terms of, at a surface level, if I'm just a member of the public looking at the lands, it's not immediately clear what's available in terms of opportunities here, so that may help just clear up some of the inquiries and clarify some of the opportunities there. Option three would be a little bit of a break from that, but it would be looking at establishing some sort of formalized rural park or natural area or sort of rural economic development opportunity. Given the amount of lands out in this area and some of the natural topography out there, it is close to the shoreline, there could be an opportunity to create a recreational attraction, something of those sorts. But again, very high level, we did not kind of explore what that would particularly look like. And option four would be sort of maintaining status quo as it is today. Next slide, please. So the other side of the, in addition to the land inventory itself, we undertook a policy review. So I'll try to brush this, because I did touch on it quite a bit already. But as part of our policy review, we did look at doing an environmental scan for similar municipalities throughout Ontario, and we particularly identified municipalities that had recently updated their surplus policies and their disposal policies. And so we worked with those to sort of get a best-practice list going and look at honing in on what the priorities were for Brian and his team in terms of managing lands. The second step to this was actually undergoing a critical review of your existing bylaws and going through line by line and seeing kind of what works, what doesn't, what do we need to insert, what do we need to remove? And so, next slide, please. So in terms of the findings and recommendations, as I mentioned a couple of times, these bylaws are quite old. So we had prepared a draft repeal-and-replace bylaw to replace the existing one. So this would be a draft municipal land surplus and disposal policy. So this has been prepared and attached as part of the report. Again, this likely may need some more massaging in the future, particularly with staff and council input, as well as perhaps the public and the municipal solicitor, to make sure it's in a spot that's comfortable. The second one would be a repeal-and-replace of the municipal road and street and road allowance policy. So we prepared some draft textual changes to that policy to reflect some of the updates that were proposed in the first bylaw. That being said, we want to mention that additional review really needs to be undertaken with public works and roads to make sure that it's still addressing their needs, because there is some standards in there with respect to stop-ups and closures and things that aren't really related to land disposal and surplus, but are still important to address in that bylaw. Next slide, please. And then finally, I promise I'm almost wrapping up here. So we have the general recommendations. So these are meant to complement sort of the primary focuses of the mandate. So we had the land inventory review, we had the policy updates, and then we had some general recommendations that we wanted to present for the municipality to consider as you move forward with updating your practices. So each of these recommendations are sort of supplemented with a brief table that outlines some of the expectations around the timelines for implementation, the required resources, costs, funding sources, those sorts of things. So I will say that each of these will require further investigation and actioning by council and staff in the future. So you can probably just enable all of these here. So I'll just walk through these really quickly and then open up the floor to questions. So the first recommendation is establishing an internal municipal land review committee or working group. This is largely intended to just keep things running smoothly in terms of administering the land inventory. If there's inquiries or reviews needed for disposing of lands or identifying them as surplus, having an internal working group from different various departments would be helpful in facilitating different viewpoints and priorities. The second is publishing a digitized municipal land inventory. So this is kind of already kind of halfway there, but we would recommend taking the GIS file that we had provided to staff and making that public so that folks are able to go online and see basic information, even just at a basic level, the spatial distribution of the municipality's parcels. It's just an interesting thing, and it can really help to clear up a lot of the time spent with inquiries or different things like that. The third is undertaking regular inventory administration and maintenance. So we'd recommend either, you know, on an annual or biannual basis, the municipality does undergo sort of a light version of the exercise we undertook to keep this inventory up to date and keep the living aspect alive of that land inventory. The fourth would be creating a marketing program for surplus lands and development opportunities. So this would largely be looking at folks like Meg and Andrew, working with either the real estate community or development community, to look at different strategies for developing some of the lands that are available. The fifth would be undertaking scheduled reviews, so this would tie into the regular inventory administration and maintenance. The sixth would be pursuing a municipal right-of-way opportunity assessment. So again, this gets back to the general focus of this mandate was not necessarily to look in-depth at the right-of-ways, but we do feel that that is an important aspect that should be considered, as there are a lot of undeveloped right-of-ways in the community that could have some potential. And lastly, this ties into kind of some of the powers in the Planning Act and Municipal Act around not getting around bonusing provisions, but allowing for more strategic leveraging of your lands. So community improvement plans, or CIPs, can allow for some exceptions to the bonusing provisions of the Municipal Act. One of the key ones, as it relates to this project, is allowing for lands to be disposed of at a nominal fee or below market value. So those scenarios would ideally be laid out in something like an affordable housing community improvement plan, where, let's say, you want to work with a housing provider to develop affordable housing, the municipality can help sort of sweeten that deal or make it easier for a housing provider to provide that affordable housing by either significantly reducing the cost or eliminating the cost of land acquisition, which can sometimes be a significant barrier. So that's just one example of what a CIP can do, but an updated CIP that is focused on affordable housing and more strategic economic development would be helpful for the community. And with that, I will wrap up my portion of the presentation, and thank you all for bearing with me. I know it was a lot. I tried to get through it as fast as possible, but I would be more than welcome to any questions or comments or any of the sort. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I know that this council has eagerly awaited this land inventory, and we thank the staff. We thank you for providing us with such a detailed overview. I know it's going to be an invaluable resource for the work moving forward, and I do know that tonight is the first of many more conversations to come around all the issues that have been laid out here. So I'm sure that my colleagues have many questions that they would like to ask of you and of this report. And so I think what I'll do is I'm going to start with the left-hand side of myself, and I'll just ask colleagues if you can, maybe just in the first round, keep to a couple of questions so we can get through everybody, and then we can have a follow-up round as well. Okay, so I'll start with Councilor Adam.
Thank you. So I don't actually have a lot of questions for you, because your report is good. It's very good. It's one of the better reports, I think, I've read in the last two years. Very detailed, a lot of great information that we are going to be using to the benefit of this municipality. So thank you so much for all that hard work. I think one of the biggest tools that I like out of it is publishing the digital land inventory. I know how much staff resources that is used throughout the year with the community, addressing or asking questions about certain things, and it'd be really nice for the community to be able to just click a button and get their own information. So thank you for that, and that's a great recommendation. I did notice that there's a lot of fragmented parcels of property and right-of-ways. Is that common, or is that unique to Port Hope, or is it pretty common?
It is quite common. You'll see it quite a bit in particularly municipalities that have undergone amalgamation and also that have a rural-urban interface. A lot of times you will see sort of that patchwork throughout communities.
Thank you. Councilor Mink.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the report as well, as Councilor Adam has said. A couple of questions for you. What's typically the turnaround time for a project like this when councils start making these type of decisions? Because I know there's a lot of anticipation and eagerness in the community, so what would be realistic as far as when we start actually working on this?
So I would probably say that's dependent on which aspect of or recommendation specifically that council's looking to pursue. So I'll just note that there's, let's call it, three kind of tranches of recommendations that are contained in the report. So the first tranche would be like the parcels that are identified, so that would be something for council to consider. And then depending on the level of interest or the desire to investigate those parcels, one could be actioned as soon as, you know, staff or council are ready to. So that's kind of a set that would be considered on their own. And then the second set would be for the policies themselves. So depending on, you know, I would probably recommend in terms of chronology, taking a look at your policies and your bylaws as a first step, because that is something that will dictate kind of how the disposal and surplus process goes. And then as far as the more general recommendations, so like the CIP, the publishing, the inventory and that, that'll ultimately depend on, you know, staff capacity, municipal capacity, council's appetite for, you know, how soon they want to pursue something, and whether they want to engage, you know, if they want to do it internally, or if they want to engage a consultant to assist with it. Kind of a non-answer, I know. I'm sorry for that, but I would say it's kind of, it really depends on what you're looking to action that would determine the timeline.
Thank you. And you mentioned having an internal working group. Have you, from your experience, do you ever see value in having a working, like, we don't have a planning committee of council. It's been discussed in the past, it hasn't happened. So do you ever see that being a value of having a community working group that would participate?
I don't have any personal experience with a community, like an external stakeholders in terms of members of the public. I will say that one that I do have experience with is sort of related agencies, so whether it's conservation authorities, housing providers, the county, that are sort of kind of at arm's length from the municipality, but not quite more broadly the public. But I would say, yeah, I don't have experience with external stakeholders on a committee, so I would be hesitant to comment on the efficacy of that.
Thank you very much. So I will let all this go. I have a specific question, but other...
Okay, go to Councilor Les.
Thank you. Not a question, more of a comment, that if we, in our strategic planning process, start identifying the type of businesses, be they retail or industrial or commercial, that we want to attract, for instance, do we want to attract a Walmart, or do we want to attract Costco? Because there's a big difference economically in the benefit to the community with the higher-paying jobs. And I'm thinking of, you know, in California where they centralize more on IT. Okay, well, that market is kind of not appropriate necessarily for us, but nuclear is with what is going to happen. And so we should be defining the type of industries, the quality of employees that we want to try and attract, and that'll help with the affordability issue, because even with the numbers you quoted for $3.59 for a house and $17.20 for rental, 68,000, I don't know too many people that are making, single people making 68,000, and not many households are making 114, and that's the minimum level. That's just not happening and will not happen in the future. So unless we are prepared to give away land and, you know, subsidize the housing, we're stuck there. The other thing is, is when we're talking about eliminating costs of land, we should be thinking also for developers. And I'm not just thinking for residential development, but for economic development, and, you know, sweetening the pot for them to attract them. Anyway, I've got many questions, but I'll...
Do you want to start by asking one of your questions, just while we're with you?
How much of Plan 173 does the municipality own now, in percentage, just roughly?
201 parcels, I believe, out of, I think there's close to 300 there, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it, I think 201 was identified.
On slide nine, you talked about assessed value. Who establishes that, or how is that established?
So that would be through MPAC, so any of the data that's from the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation that's available, so that's tied to the lands.
And just if I could supplement, just with respect to appraised value... And just the, if I could supplement, just with respect to appraised value. Assessed value is one thing as defined by MPAC as Jesse noted, but in our current practices, and I'm sure future practices as well, when we require an appraisal for a property disposal, that's done by a certified appraiser.
Council Todd.
All right. Thanks very much. Thanks, Jesse, for the presentation. I only have one question. It's a clarifying question and you may have said it and that I just didn't catch it. But, um, when we have lands like Town Hall and you say that they weren't added to the inventory, is it a case that they were inventoried and not put in the report or they're not inventoried at all or included in any of our digitized versions?
Uh, great question. Um, so what I meant when, uh, when I said that they weren't inventoried, so they're still part of the inventory itself. I just meant they were, they were kind of cut from consideration for, for our purposes when we were looking at opportunities. But they would still be, like, if you were to publish sort of the inventory today, you could like filter out and.
Right. Town Hall would show up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Council Claire.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll start with a, a question just around, um, I got the selection of properties that were taken into further consideration or explored further. I, I assume that those were based partly on though size, the ability to, to meet with our current zoning considerations and that. There are some things that we've already commissioned as a council in terms of changes to our zoning bylaw. Uh, one of them is look, uh, recommendations for the inclusion for provisions for things like tiny homes, which are not currently provided for explicitly in the zoning. I, I'm curious to hear your thoughts on now that we have this tool, there may be parcels of land that were not deemed to be appropriate for development for housing that once those changes to our zoning are made, may become feasible for something that looks different from what we're used to seeing. How, how do we as staff, as council, use the tool that you've created to help, uh, advance, say some things that don't yet exist in our zoning?
Great question. Um, so as part of our review, so as I mentioned, we had a number of different filters and it was kind of an iterative process that we went through. So parcel size was, um, was one of the, uh, one, one of the measures. I believe we did use, um, quite relatively speaking, a low, a low parcel size. I think it was like 300 square meters or something. Um, so as far as, uh, like a residential lot goes, relatively tiny, uh, that being said, yeah, there may be other parcels that are smaller that may be, um, more appealing. Uh, the, the other thing that we looked at too, which is kind of related to that, um, is we, I forget the specific name of it, but there's a tool in GIS that, uh, it's an algorithm that analyzes a parcel and makes sure that it's not like a 300 meter, square meter strip that's, you know, a meter wide or something. Right? So we took that into consideration as well. If there's some funky shaped parcels, um, we obviously didn't, we wanted to flag those as well. But, uh, no, it's, it's a great point and I, and I think, uh, it would be relatively easy for staff to work with, uh, with GIS. Um, you, you have GIS staff, uh, at the municipality. So, um, it's, it's relatively easy to be able to just bake in a filter for, you know, you could do a search for, based on a criteria around zoning, um, size, different things like that. And I think that would be the intent with the, the recommendation for subsequent reviews in the future too. So if the municipality decides to change, you know, things like zoning or how, how you, uh, how you prioritize certain lands. That'll be something that I think staff and council can, uh, can certainly work on. Yeah.
I think we're going to have an opportunity to use the sort of principles and the, the review we've gone through so far as we move forward in the future and, and things change or planning exchange and whatnot. Like Jesse said, to be able to come back and continually do that maintenance that's being recommended. And in those circumstances, that's when we'll be able to, you know, potentially expand the opportunities.
Did you have any other questions? I did say two or three per round. So if you, if you want to, while we're with you, if you want to do us, okay, okay. So I, I, I have definitely more than two or three questions, but I'm, I'm going to try to, um, contain myself. I think what I really appreciated about this report is the fact that it really does make very clear the need for this municipality to have more diverse and affordable housing options to meet the community's growing needs and also that we need to get a little bit more laser focused in terms of our priorities for, for economic development. And I have two related questions in terms of, of that comment. First is you note in the report that there's been no apartment starts since 2009 in the municipality of Port Hope. And given the affordability numbers that you shared with us, I'm wondering if you had considered what the reasons have been for us not having any apartment starts since, uh, 2009? And in terms of, uh, some of the, uh, observations around industry context and even in terms of one, uh, the 173, how, um, how, well, how would, for example, the new, uh, discussions, uh, and engagement with OPG and the Ministry of Energy and Electrification to explore the development of clean energy in Wesleyville be affecting some of our thinking about your recommendations and how they might fit in a broader overall strategic plan for the municipality?
Okay. I think I got those. I know. Very, very good questions. I think I will, I will tackle the first one and I will try to tackle the second one, but I may defer to, uh, either Andrew or Brian for that. But for the first one, in terms of the apartment starts, um, so typically I, I think that may have been contained in parcels, uh, reporting. So typically they'll take, um, housing start data from CMHC and any available data from the municipality. And I think just speaking, um, anecdotally, from my experience in development over the last sort of 10 years, I think just apartments, they're, they're just expensive. It's expensive to develop, um, higher density buildings, particularly in smaller communities. It's, it's a lot easier and, and more cost effective to, it's the unfortunate truth to, to develop, you know, si- single family, uh, larger lot developments, um, of that nature. So I would say anecdotally in my experience, that's what I would say is part of the, part of the reasoning behind it. Notwithstanding that obviously there is demand for, you know, rental units, apartment units and smaller units. But I would say, I, I would, I wouldn't want to go too deep into specifically this community as to what the reasons are for the, um, the, the lack of apartment starts, but, uh, anecdotally, that's in my experience, I, I would say that would be a guess of mine. And then, um, I hope that is, that's what you're asking, I hope. And then, uh, for the second question on the OPG.
Sure. I, I'm happy to answer that. We're, we've had sort of a general announcement from the province and, uh, OPG with respect to their look at Wesleyville for the potential of clean energy generation. Should they move forward with those plans and involve municipality and the community engagement efforts they've committed to? It is, you know, it is safe to say that the development pressure felt, uh, by the municipality more broadly will intensify as a result of, uh, any planning, uh, requirements related to that potential development. And as such, I think expectations in the municipality as it relates to what development could look like or how quickly development could move forward, uh, would intensify as well.
And I'll, I'll just do one, uh, follow-up question and that is, um, I was, I was struck by, um, one of the observations that was made on a parcel land around the community response to us using green space and parkland for any kind of housing, uh, development. And I'm, I'm wondering if we have, rather than looking project by project to certain development opportunities and what that might mean for green space. I'm wondering if you had looked globally at what our green space is in comparisons to, uh, to municipalities of our size. So here I'm really thinking about, do we have the tools for a balanced approach, approach to development? And the potential for using lands like, for example, uh, the case of parcel 614 on Ralston.
So I, I will say that we, we didn't specifically look at the, uh, the amount of green space, uh, in the community. It would probably be a very interesting thing to look at. Um, but yeah, as part of our review, we didn't particularly focus on that. We did try to balance our sort of qualitative analysis, like we had the quantitative side of things where it was kind of the numbers proximity to amenities, those sorts of things. When we did our qualitative review and the parcels were filtered down, we did have a few parcels that were used as green space that are, that were parked, that we did a more qualitative evaluation. Also with help from staff input as well, just to make sure that, um, we were kind of contextualizing that review and, and, uh, cause, cause typically with these types of reviews, um, you want to err on the side of caution and usually eliminate green space and open space from, from consideration because generally municipalities are wanting to, to hang on to those. But, um, in, insofar as the amount of, uh, yeah, insofar as the amount of open space or green space, um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a number for that.
I can, I can speak to that. I did get a heads up that we might have a question about parkland. So I did a bit of digging. Uh, so I, I can speak to in terms of measurement, what that looks like. Uh, and in our most recent leisure, leisure services master plan, uh, from 2021, it identifies that, um, sort of the benchmark for municipalities in Ontario would be, uh, an average of between two and four hectares of active municipal parkland per 1,000 residents. Municipality of Port Hope happens to have 3.1 hectares of active municipal parkland per 1,000 residents. So we are not in a, uh, we are not in a parkland deficit and across the municipality. We are sort of well within that average recommended, um, standard for municipalities in Ontario. What we do know, we have needs in other areas, housing, affordable housing potentially. But from a parkland perspective, at least as it relates to the metric we have, uh, we, we know we're in, in good shape. That's not to say we don't need more. That's not to say we should be disposing of the parkland we do have. But from that, that measurement perspective and the question you're asking, that is, um, that's our most accurate measurement.
Thank you for that clarification. So we don't have a parkland crisis, but we do have a housing crisis. The, the, the final question I have is, um, there was, uh, in, in, in terms of one of the, the lots that was referred to in your report, that there are requests for purchase has been submitted at the time of writing in terms of parcel 550. Just wondering, what is our current policy in terms of dealing with requests for purchase? Is there a, a policy that we should have in place that currently doesn't exist, uh, for how these sorts of things come to the municipality? And for example, if we did have an offer to purchase one of the lots that you have identified, but you have said is financially not feasible for a rental option or affordable housing option, because the metrics aren't there. But we have an offer on the table from a developer that says, I can actually do it if there is a package in place from the municipality. How would we deal with that kind of, uh, offer on the table? So I'm just wondering from a policy perspective, what we have in place and what we might want to consider in terms of the metrics that you've proposed to us, which in some ways are very dire in terms of affordable housing options for the municipality. So that's my question.
Fantastic question. Uh, so, so first, um, so your existing policy, the, uh, I forget the exact number, but your 2008 bylaw, um, that outlines your surplus and disposal policy. So that does outline, um, criteria for the receipt of, um, requests, but it's not, it's not very clear on sort of what the next steps are. And that was sort of one of the things that we flagged when we did our review. Brian, I, I don't know if maybe you would want to speak to how that's handled when a request comes in. But we identified a need to clarify that, uh, that specific scenario in the new bylaw.
Sure. I'd be happy to. So we do have, uh, we do have an offer to purchase or at least an inquiry regarding purchase related to the property in question. Uh, that's from an abutting property owner. We have generally, uh, indicated a bit of a pause as we work through our land inventory practice or project. And, uh, what we really need, and Jesse has noted extensively here tonight, is a revised bylaw that facilitates these requests in a manner that not only moves things forward more quickly, but has sort of a structure to it that makes it very clear, um, what happens when an offer comes in, how quickly that moves along, but also identifies the requirements of the, the, the inquirer. Right? We don't have, we don't have a fees and charges bylaw that captures the work related and there's always extensive work related, even on an inquiry, uh, that doesn't capture that accurately. So we just don't have the staff time and energy to undertake thorough reviews unless there's a compelling reason related to a purchase. Um, that's why you see so few and far between have really come forward over, over the years. The, the new bylaw we're proposing and working on finalizing is going to capture the expectations of staff, the expectations of council, the expectations on the inquirer and also what their rights are with respect to sort of appealing a, a decision of staff and where council gets involved in those, those, um, those matters as well. So it's the new bylaw, which we're close on. We'll be preparing that and presenting that to council in the next month or two. It's that new bylaw we need before we can have a real foundation to handle these requests.
Thank you. I'm going to move back to this side of the table. If anybody has, uh, Deputy Mayor.
That's interesting.
Keep shutting it off. As a bookend to sort of Brian's comments and, and the question too. So community improvement plans a, as well are sort of a, kind of the main tool that comes to mind in terms of like, if you're looking to, like sweeten the pot or make it more appealing for someone where, where the financial situation is not as feasible. But that could be changed if the lands are reduced in val- in, in, uh, purchase value or, or given away for a nominal fee. A CIP can be used to identify, you know, if, if you're looking at like targeted types of housing or affordable housing or, getting back to the economic development discussion earlier, a CIP could be used for, for industry as well. So if you have some targeted sectors that you want to hone in on, um, the municipality could potentially consider a CIP that allows the municipality to consider, okay, if you meet each of these criteria, we'll consider, you know, disposing of the lands for, for, you know, X percentage less, depending on, you know, how many jobs you're creating, the type of industry you are, those sorts of things.
Okay. Back to the, um, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so I have two more questions for you and then I have a couple of questions, just housekeeping questions for staff. So the two to you are, are very specific. Um, on area 173, I noticed that there is three areas that looked like roads, um, owned by the municipality. And there's a few that look like roads that are not owned by the municipality. So is there in fact private property owners for some of those roadways?
Shutting it off. So I don't have it in front of me right now, but, uh, but I, I will say that in, in my past experience and I, if I'm remembering correctly for this site, um, there are some cases where a, a road right of way or a surveyed, we'll call it a surveyed road right of way, um, was deeded over or purchased as part of a, like there may be, there may be someone who owns, you know, three lots and that was thrown in as part so they can get access from the road or, um, I don't know if Brian, if you have anything to add to that, but it may be just a checker boarding.
Yeah. I think we'd have to do some further review, but, but, but I believe, yes, I, I believe there are privately owned right of ways. There's a big difference between a, a right of way, you know, 66 feet that kind of looks like a road on a map and a, and a road that's formally identified as a road, um, you know, versus a driveway versus an improved road versus those different things. But the, the tapestry that is Plan 173 and the sales and the sales that have taken place over the last 50 plus years has resulted in a sort of, interesting distribution of privately and publicly owned property.
Thank you. So then my other question, the typology I thought was really interesting. And of course putting in rural property does skew that, um, single detached housing. And of course we don't want a lot of high density in the rural area. So do you have urban, within the urban area, the data on that only as well as comparators to other communities that would be like this? So we know what we're looking at just as a comparison.
That's a great question and I just really wish that we did look at that when we did this, but, uh, no, we don't. I don't have that off, off, off the top, but I, I don't imagine it would be too difficult to, um, to take a look at impact data, um, and, uh, or census data and, and take a look at that, that typologies. But, um, as part of our review, we didn't, uh, we didn't break it down like that.
Okay. Thank you. Which I wouldn't expect you to speak to today, but maybe as we go forward and our decisions, having that would be really helpful.
Moving back to the other side of the table, um, Council Les. Moving back to the other side of the table, councillor Les.
All this is very, very good. But where it will fall apart is how we react to developers, realtors, interested owners coming at us. And if we use the same processes we use now, they're too slow. Okay, because we don't have the people, the requisite number of people. And who makes the final decision? Is it a planning decision? Is it an engineering decision? Is it a council decision? And that's why I think an integrated group of like you suggested right up front to do the land management and disposal. And it'd be a group effort that includes input from everybody. But somebody has to be able to make the final decision. And I I I think we're going to be mired, you know, like in process and developing the all, the all and then end all bylaws. But we won't get anything done.
Councillor Todd, any? Councillor Claire.
I have, I guess, a similar comment to councillor Les. And I don't know if it's really a question, but it may be a question that simply, could you offer us some advice on this? Because one of the challenges that I see us budding up against is similar to what councillor Les has just described is these steps that are outlined here are fantastic, and it all seems very logical. But when I think back to when we commissioned this, this report, this project, it was in the interest of accelerating housing development and affordable housing in our community. And we're, you know, two years into this council's term where we very clearly from the outset have us have identified that as a clear priority. We are struggling to make progress on a few different pieces, which you've outlined in the report. A couple of them are in the 19 properties that you examined further that we're trying to move forward with in some some capacity. But taking it's it's taking a long time using our existing tools. And I guess the challenge I see here is failure to continue to move those pieces forward while we wait for updated bylaws, updated policies and that, and then finding ourselves in another two years, having not seen shovels in the ground with any form of new housing, specifically affordable housing. So I guess my question is recognizing that tension between putting the right plans in place for sustainable future strategic uses, while also I, you know, making immediate progress on this very real need in the community. Could you provide some advice on how we might pursue both at in the short term without sacrificing one versus the other?
Yeah, great question. I think obviously I'm biased because I recommended it, but I think I think it would be in council's best interest and the municipality's best interest to pursue the updates to your bylaws as soon as possible. Because that was the whole intent of reviewing those was to make sure that we're not logging council and staff down in in process. That was one of the main issues with the old bylaw was that it was just kind of a little bit too much of choose your own adventure, and there was a bit of paralysis in terms of what's the next step? How do we prioritize? So what the hope with this draft bylaw is we've integrated strategic priorities directly into the policy. So specifically speaking to affordable housing and and economic development, like strategic economic development. But it's not so prescriptive that it handcuffs council either. So it gives a bit of flexibility for council and staff to expedite decisions and and give a little more leeway to a process. If there's a great housing development that comes through the door, where you're working with an affordable housing provider and you want to make something happen, everybody's on the same page, you can you can use that process to expedite it. So I I would say with the current bylaw, it kind of presents a hurdle to to doing it that way. I would maybe pass it to Brian. There there may be some ways in which you could massage the current process alongside updating the bylaw to deal with, you know, matters that are currently in in the pipe. But I I would be hesitant to to write a a check that I can cash in terms of suggestions for what staff should do or what council can do for that.
Sure, thank you. I I think there's opportunity, like Jesse said, to to continue to move things forward. I do think things are generally moving forward. Some of these more individual opportunities require some additional review. I like I noted earlier, and I noted in the report, it with respect to actually presenting these updated bylaws for council's consideration. We are. We are close, and that's going to be a huge accomplishment that really sets up that foundation to facilitate the future questions. As it relates to resourcing, we I I've been pretty clear about this. We we do not have the resources to sort of meet expect or growing expectations related to how quickly we turn around these opportunities. We just simply don't. So noted in the report is the other thing we don't have is a sort of dedicated funding strategy to facilitate some of these further opportunities. So right now, if we sell surplus land like we have, whether it's the business park or the former police station or some of these other properties that have come and been approved by council, including, you know, Shooter Street recently at $188,000. That that money is being put into the general coffers of the municipality, not going directly to anything in particular. So that's an opportunity we want to come back to council with after some further consideration and say, where would you like the revenue generated by some of these opportunities to go and how should that be used? So whether or not that's an affordable housing CIP or to fund the resources we require, that's a consideration council's going to have to make in the near future. I would. I would leave council with tonight, thinking about the other thing we don't have, which is more of a general term, is a is a mandate. A mandate on those opportunities outside of affordable housing. A mandate on those opportunities related to surplusing and selling property, whether that's for generating revenue or generating future opportunities. We we don't yet have that. There are municipalities that have really set a firm mandate for members of staff to go sell $1 million worth of property or or fund this project through the sale of surplus land. That's something council should consider heading into the strategic plan conversations. And as we move forward with the next recommendations that'll come out of this project.
Thank you. That was a. That was a terrific question. I've I've got just a a couple of things that that came to mind in relation to what was just asked. And that is that I do think that we need to have a very honest conversation as part of any strategic planning around issues of density, wear, height. These come up again individually by projects. But I do think that we need to have a more principled approach. It's very, it's very clear to me, too, that we need to do a lot more in terms of the incentives that are available to us through the CIP and other means, given the very sobering metrics that you provided around some of the funding opportunities for the disposal of lands. But I'm wondering, in some of the calculations that you use, did you actually consider some of the newest building innovations and technologies from prefab construction through to modular through to 3D building and whether or not that would affect some of the calculations that you were making?
Good question. So you're speaking with respect to the financial feat like the pro formas. So it's my understanding that parcel uses the, if you're familiar with the Altus Group costs, construction cost estimates. So every year, Altus Group will publish average construction costs based on different regions in Canada, depending on typologies. So just due to the demonstrative nature of this exercise, it, I will say, it was done at quite a high level. So from our design perspective, we did put together a hypothetical kind of situation. And then we kind of gave them an average unit size and a typology to work with in terms of the cost. So their costing wouldn't have necessarily taken into account something more detailed, like more innovative construction practices or materials or, you know, sustainability, that that sort of thing. It would be more of a standardized kind of, for lack of a better word, kind of like napkin math, but a little more structured and just and and again, it's it's meant really to kind of paint a little bit clearer of a picture to council about what the potential is there. But if you had a specific development proposal or or something like that, it would arguably undergo a more detailed exercise. And, you know, that may help reduce construction costs.
Thank you. And then just a just a final comment or thought. I'm wondering if, as we move forward too, if there could be clarity brought to this council as well, to the public around the differences between RFPs and going to tender on different properties so that there's there's clarity in terms of what the the differences are between those two options. Any final, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So these are more housekeeping questions for staff, so I don't think you can answer these. But so I know the answers to these, but they they came to me. So I think for the sake of transparency and consistent information, we we approved this a little over a year ago. And I have had some questions about what what was so first, kind of preface it by saying, I encourage this report. This is not for argument's sake. This is just for reminder's sake. Is that what was the original motion that was given by council to bring this report forward? And where did the funding come from for this report? Just just to have that information out there. And the last question, and and might be an unpopular question, but I've had some questions come to me regarding the weighted voting. And I know that we did give direction to staff about weighted voting to make a report. But if there is the the planning policy, when we go through this process, if there's any circumstance where that weighted voting would be applied. And maybe you can't answer that today, but maybe in your report that that could come through. So if you could speak about those three, that would be great.
That's right. I appreciate the heads up I got on these questions, Deputy Mayor. So just as a reminder, sort of what instigated this opportunity. Certainly, it's it's been long noted that we have some concerns around our sort of clarity around ownership of property with respect to tracking records and tracking that material. The other thing, before I get into the answer, I wanted to note that hasn't come up tonight, that is hugely impactful on the municipality's ability to surplus property, consider property and have a strong case to move some things forward, is the fact that we're we're the subject of, you know, the largest federal cleanup of low active, low level radioactive waste in in Canada. So when we have sort of records of site condition required on some of these odd parcels and common right of way challenges, there's a whole layer of challenge on top of that related to the LRW impacts, the impacts of the cleanup or the pending cleanup or the future cleanup related to those parcels. So I wanted to note that. But with respect to what instigated this project, in 2023, council at time of budget set aside $125,000 for the purposes of future economic development opportunities or activities. And moving through 2023, it became clear a lot of those were to be associated with opportunities related to affordable housing. Recognizing that and recognizing how impactful our ability to move land, develop land, sell land was going to be in relation to affordable housing. Staff came back with a recommendation to set aside a portion of those funds, $75,000, to undertake this review. And that's what we've been doing since. So I, if you want me to read the sort of the the actual motion at the time, it was council passed Resolution 492020003 to 2023, directed staff to seek and hire a firm to facilitate the review of all municipally owned properties for the purposes of classifying and identifying appropriate parcels of land for potential surplus to strategically support economic development and affordable housing opportunities. Two, to review all relevant land parcels in the municipality and develop an updated comprehensive inventory of all lands, identifying developed and undeveloped parcels to support potential local economic and residential development. And three, review and recommend current policies related to the surplus and disposition of property. Recommend updates that reflect current best practices in Ontario. And finally, four, develop updated policy and procedures related to municipal land acquisition. So that was council's direction at the time, and that's what we're happy to deliver tonight. And as we move forward with future recommendations and the presentation of new bylaws and the publication of our GIS inventory, that's what we're we're delivering on is your direction at the time. Finally, I think the only outstanding question was related to weighted voting, some questions you've got. So just a reminder, as you mentioned, we are preparing a report for council regarding the history of weighted voting and some of the other misconceptions that exist related to the double vote per transition board order from 2000. But generally, well, not generally, specifically, our transition board order identifies that there's weighted voting available to the two rural councillors for three things. One, approvals under the Planning Act. Two, tax rate adjustments arising out of the restructuring. And three, boundary adjustments. We'll provide some additional clarity through that report and the ongoing legal review. But in relation to disposing or purchasing property, neither of those three items, I I don't know what the argument would be that these are sort of applicable as it relates to weighted voting. But my answer to you tonight publicly would be that, no, weighted vote doesn't apply. And I can say with absolute confidence since amalgamation, the weighted vote has not been used for the purchase or disposition of property.
Go ahead. Just have a follow up. I i in the event of zoning changes and that type of thing, would that be a more applicable example?
Yeah, as as number one identified in the transition border approvals under the Planning Act, that would be official plan approvals, zoning by law approvals. Certainly, as it stands right now, the the weighted vote applies. But in terms of considering a disposition of property, it's simply not a Planning Act consideration.
Thank you. Any final thoughts, comments? Okay, so the recommended motion is to receive this excellent report and presentation for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Claire, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favor. And that is passed unanimously.
Thank you, members of council, and thank you so much for having me. Got to explore your beautiful community today and happy to be here. So thank you.
And and I just, if I can, I just want to thank Jesse and the team at Republic Urbanism and Partial Economics for their their great work. This sort of concludes our contract with them and the delivery of this report. It's up to us now to move some of these pieces forward, but I just I just wanted to publicly identify the good work that's gone into it. Thank Meg Ronson, our economic development coordinator, for her work on this as well, and just express my thanks. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and the council echoes all of your sentiments. At this point, we're going to take a seven minute, a seven minute brief bio recess. Thank you. Okay, we'll be reconvening. Moving on to item number five, we have no notices of motion on the agenda this evening. Moving on to item number six, updates and new business. So the first is a very, very warm welcome to our new Director of Development Services. Please join us in welcoming Desta McAdam, our new Director of Development Services. Ms. McAdam brings over 12 years of experience in the public sector and will provide, as you know, I said, will provide, strategic leadership for the municipality's economic development, planning and building divisions, guiding initiatives that promote sustainable growth, tourism, economic vitality and thoughtful community development. We are excited to have you and look forward to the positive impact that you will have in shaping the future of our community. So a very, very well, warm welcome, and thank you for joining the Port Hope family and community.
Thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here and and look forward to working with everyone.
Moving on to the next update, which is our New Year Connections event. So kick off the new year with your Port Hope council. Our New Year Connections event takes place at the Jack Burger Sports Complex on Sunday, January 11 from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And this is a free, family-friendly event where you can swim, skate and chat with your council members. Light refreshments will be provided, and of course, all ages are welcome. Council members will be on site, some swimming, some skating, some on foot to meet, greet and hear from the community and visit the the event's calendar on our website for more details. And actually, on on the point of the new year, I thought it might be a a nice idea to provide a little bit of an overview of some of the accomplishments of council with, of course, the excellent support of staff over the last year. And these are just a few high level highlights that I want to share. The staff is working on a very fulsome update that will be published on the municipal website. But it's always good to do a little bit of a year in review. So some of the highlights that we've seen. In May of this year, we received provincial funding for a youth wellness hub headquartered in Port Hope and additional funding of a half a million dollars from Cameco. In May, we also In May, we also secured more flexible transportation options through the deregulation of taxis in the municipality. In June, we conducted a very successful by-election. In June, the county also announced that we will have 119 new childcare spaces in Port Hope located at the Ruth Clark, the old Ruth Clark Centre, and a new one also at the Canton Hub. The Canton Hub had a few hiccups in the last number of months, which, as I've announced at this table before, have been sorted out. So we're moving forward with those two new childcare spaces, which are the first new childcare spaces in a very, very long time funded through the province and through advocacy at the county table. In August, we saw the reopening of the Port Hope Walk-in Clinic and the establishment of new fishing regulations for the Gannarasca River. In September, we saw the opening of Loyalist College, Port Hope Campus. In October, we reached something that was new for the municipality, and that is reaching 10% of the voting population for our budget survey. From November to December of last year, we saw the opening of the Modernized Shelter Services at 310 Division Street in Coburg. And in December, we also saw the putting into place a new interim CAO for the municipality. Some other high-level accomplishments through the year. We saw the reorganization of the municipality under the former CAO. We saw the establishment of new positions, including the Director of Environmental Services, Kyle Becock, and the hiring of our new director that I mentioned today, Desta McAdam. We also saw the Port Hope Fire and Emergency Services respond to the highest number of calls on record, responding to 718 calls on record for the community. This is tremendous, and I congratulate you, Director Williams, on that accomplishment. The fourth thing I want to mention is, in December, the Council of the Municipality of Port Hope stated its support for continued dialogue and engagement with the Ontario Power Generation, the Ministry of Energy and Electrification, and local stakeholders to explore the development of clean energy generation projects at the Wesleyville site. We also saw the land inventory completion, which was presented to council this evening. And of course, I would be remiss to say that we did a tremendous job. And I don't think that often the public recognizes how much work and effort went into the once-in-generation project of Walton Street. And I'm so very proud to say that we are one of the very few municipalities that took on a capital project of this size and delivered on budget and on time. It's a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. So these are but a few highlights of the last year. I want to, you know, thank all of the staff for their support, for their hard work, for always going above and beyond. I also want to thank the council for your efforts in attending all the additional meetings and making all the efforts towards continuing to move the business forward of the municipality. I think you will all agree that we've had a stellar year with incredible accomplishments in 2025. We'll certainly see even more accomplishments as we continue to move forward. And as I mentioned, a fulsome reporting of all of the things that we have done will be available on the website. And I'm just wondering if we have a sense of the timing on when we might see that report? I think that's a question for Director Gilmore.
Yeah, thank you. Staff have put the request to our department heads to identify those accomplishments in addition to the ones you've raised tonight. And they've been given a deadline, I think in a week or two. We plan to publish the 2024 year-end review early February. So those in the audience, those listening at home, if you Google "Port Hope year-end review", you'll bring up our pages from 2023. When we're in a position to publish those in early February, you'll be able to see, and we'll do some advertisements related to the publication of that item and give that the attention it deserves. So thanks for that.
And thank you to staff for that. Moving on, the 2025 meeting schedule has been changed. So just please be aware that there have been changes. Committee of the Whole meetings will be held on the first Tuesday and council meetings on the third Tuesday of each month. Question period has resumed at both the committee and the committee of the Whole council meetings, allowing the public and media to ask informal questions and municipal matters. Finally, before I turn over to council members to have updates that they might want to share, I want to ask Director Williams to give us an update on the via rail incident that occurred in our municipality and maybe speak to how that fits into our general plans and strategies around emergency preparedness.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. So I think some of you may be aware, Port Hope Fire Emergency Services was contacted in relation to an incident which occurred at the via rail track yesterday afternoon just east of East Hail Line in our municipality. We were requested to attend to assist in the evacuation of several hundred passengers from a stranded via rail train, many with mobility issues. So as council knows, we are just finalizing the development of our rail safety plan for municipality and our evacuation plan, which we implemented several aspects of. I can say that we safely evacuated, like I said, almost 300 passengers without incident, and they were transported by a number of buses that were arranged to their destination sites. So I can say that definitely that the time, effort, and energy put forward to the development of the rail safety plans for municipality. This is a great example of the importance of putting emergency management at the foremost of our minds, right? So thank you for the opportunity to highlight that.
And thank you very much for the report on that, the update, and also the success that you had in evacuating so many people without incident. Thank you. Any other updates that council would like to share? Councillor Todd?
Great, thanks very much. I'm very excited to announce that the mayor and I are going to be hosting an AI conference on February 6th and 7th at Capitol Theatre, the proceeds of which will be donated to the municipality to help fund advances in technology and Town Hall, the Canton Hub, or elsewhere. The conference is designed to educate, inspire, and inform the public, staff, and elected officials as the ongoing and innovative uses of AI in municipal government across Canada. 14 expert panelists and presenters representing local governments from Halifax to Calgary will participate in this one-and-a-half-day conference and share how they are using AI to solve problems, find efficiencies, and reduce taxes in areas of fire prevention, community engagement, climate and emergency preparedness, road maintenance, housing and homelessness, and much more. Tickets are available through the Capitol Theatre's box office beginning Thursday, January 9th, and provide pricing options for both in-person and live-stream access. Tickets for live-stream access will then give us an unlimited audience size. And although we aren't asking for any municipal resources for this event, I would like to invite any members of council or staff who want to help to reach out to your networks and encourage them and their municipal teams to purchase tickets.
Thank you for that update and just want to thank you for all the efforts in terms of helping to develop this event. And I, for one, looking forward to a lot of learnings in seeing what this new brave world of AI means in all of our lives, in particular for the work of local government and municipal staff. And in fact, we do have the whole range of Canada, right from B.C. to Nova Scotia.
Did I miss B.C.?
You did. I had to just say that, just because I have a soft spot for B.C. But I think that the number of speakers that councillor Attridge is talking about is really impressive. And all of these folks are bringing some of the most innovative examples and practices that exist right now in the country. And we talked about the Gannarasca Forest earlier. We have a deputy chief coming in from Halifax that has developed really interesting AI technologies around prevention of forest fires. And some of the tools that they're using there are really innovative. So I think that it's an opportunity for us to learn here, but also to extend to surrounding counties. And as you said, councillor Todd, to potentially the rest of Canada for anybody who's interested in this topic. So thank you for that. Councillor Clare?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a quick update that the Community Climate Action Plan draft has been received and is currently being reviewed by the Environmental Advisory Committee, having already gone through a review by staff, and will be coming forward to council soon. So I know that's something that was top of mind at our very first meeting. Even we talked about the climate emergency. So just sharing that update that it is now with us and looking good and coming very soon.
That's very exciting. Any other updates from the council table? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to question period. So it is now time for question period, and the purpose of question period is to make inquiries of council related to matters of municipal business. Please note, it's not meant to be an avenue to ask questions to staff. If you have questions specifically for your council members, you can ask them now. And I just want to highlight, if your questions are operational in nature, they may be best answered by a staff person, and we will be happy to take down your question, your name and your contact, and follow up with you after the meeting. So if you do have a question, please step up, identify your name and address, and ensure that that purple button is pushed on the microphone before speaking. But before we get to the public, I'm going to just ask whether or not there were any other questions from around the council table. Seeing none, and keep hoping for media, but there is no media. So we will move on to questions from the public.
Ed White, Mill Street. I just wonder if you guys can clear something up for me. There was, we're talking about these lots on the eastern boundary. And it was mentioned that they're not suited for development. Because, and I'm not sure why, but something about size or shape or something like that. So I'm just kind of curious if that is in the municipality's purview. Who sets the standards for lot sizes and shapes or whatever? And what the, like a square footage type of thing on a house, whether you can have a trailer or a modular home in these sites? And now we're talking about tiny homes. I'm just wondering, who sets the standards for that? Is that a provincial thing? Is that a municipal thing? Are there bylaws that can be changed so that more appropriate housing can be built? I'm just wondering, who sets the standards for this type of stuff?
Well, yes, to all of the questions that you just asked about who weighs in on those final kinds of decisions. Because if you've ever been to a plan-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Can everyone else hear?
Now I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. The answer is yes to many of the questions that you're asking because there are many different levels of government that affect the kinds of decisions we make around the kinds of housing that is built in this municipality. And if you've been to a planning meeting that we've had here, you'll see that the vetting process is looking at everything from Ontario policies, county plans, right through to municipal plans. And so the question around zoning and housing and what's appropriate, where I think is going to be very much front and center as we move through our strategic planning process and taking into account the inventory that was put in front of us. And I think it also speaks to the question that councillor Clare had posed in terms of how quickly can we move if we want to make change, if we want to build? Given the processes that we have in place, where are the opportunities to make changes where they're required? And I think that will be coming in, hopefully, in the next short while, some clarity around those exact kinds of questions.
Given the idea that was discussed before that Wesleyville might is on a short list to become a nuke plant, is that going to be infrastructure that has to be, like more or different infrastructure that has to be put out that way? Can that be associated with different lots or anything like that? Or I'm just wondering what, you know, because evidently that subdivision that was developed there was, there was a development hold or something like that on it, and I don't know what that means.
Well, at this point, Ed, the only thing that the municipality has agreed to through council direction is to continue dialogue and engagement with OPG and the ministry about explore and other relevant stakeholders to explore the development of a variety of clean energy generation options for Wesleyville. And what that looks like, the next number of months will tell. And certainly, what that means in terms of any further development of Wesleyville, including infrastructure, will also, I think, become more clear in the coming months through that kind of engagement process.
Can we somehow write the infrastructure thing for the plant? Obviously, I'm guessing the province is going to be involved in that. Would the municipality be able to write in on that kind of stuff to get some infrastructure out there?
Well, from my perspective, and I'm only speaking as chair, I'm always thinking that anything is an option. But I think until we know what we're dealing with and have some very concrete details, that that's a premature answer to be giving.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the public?
Madam Chair, Chris Wallace, Walton Street. The inventory presentation was very good. The demonstration sites were very high-level, but showed a lot of common sense. However, there's a couple of very significant, highly-developable, large pieces of land that were not addressed, and I'm just wondering what's the process for eventually addressing these? The first and most obvious, of course, is the Centre Pier. Also, something that would be more challenging, but Lance Lane and all of the lands immediately east of Lance Lane.
Thank you very much for that observation. Did you want to, do we want to take this in, or would you like to speak to it, Director Gilmore?
If it's appropriate. I've answered a number of questions tonight. I'm happy to try to answer this. The land inventory was sort of dedicated towards, like we've mentioned here a few times tonight, opportunities for eventual affordable housing and opportunities for surplusing properties. So Centre Pier, certainly a long history there, a long legacy there, is generally identified and captured in the inventory. But that further review could be conducted in the future. The consultant, as he noted, identified with staff a number of opportunities for council to consider as we move forward with this. But Centre Pier was not one where we spent a considerable amount of time considering where we are today with that remediation. As for the properties related to east of Lance Lane, I'm not sure if you're lying, you're referring to the Elias Street parking lot? Sorry?
Sorry. Yeah, neither, either one of those sites, Lance Lane or the pier, could have some affordable housing potential, whether they're exclusively affordable housing. And I know that the pier, nothing's going to happen until PHI is finished, and that could be several years down the road.
But I think that's exactly the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, but long-term planning is never appropriate, and quite frankly, it is long-term.
With 339- So with 339, with 339 parcels of land to consider as we move forward, there's going to be opportunities for long-term planning on a whole variety of these parcels. We've identified ones that are generally viable or could be viable for consideration and sort of a tiered approach to bringing these forward to council. I think that's all I have to-
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to us. Any final questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none. This concludes our business to be covered on today's agenda. And I'm in a position to adjourn the meeting. Committee of the Whole is adjourned. Thank you. And it is, let me just check the exact time, 8:26 p.m. Thank you very much.